Okay, I'd like to reconvene the May 26, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting and call it to order. Tim, will you say your spiel?
Certainly. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 19, lost my place, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by accessing the live stream of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel, youtube.com/freetownma, or accessible by visiting freetownma.gov/freecamp. In the event the livestream is unsuccessful, I am recording the meeting, and the recording will be posted to the town's YouTube channel as soon as I am able to following the conclusion of this meeting. That is all I got.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for being here, and Gary, do you want to open your meeting?
I've just got Craig on the phone having trouble into the meeting. But go back to him in a moment. Okay, open the Finance Committee's meeting for today is 8/26/2020. Tim, do I have to read the?
Nope, we're good.
Yeah. Yeah, what, do I have to do anything else now, or are we good to go?
You should be good to go.
Do you want to get in touch with Craig?
Yeah, okay, I'll see what I can do.
Okay. All right. At this time, I will ask Mike McHugh to bring us an update on the February 15, 2020 special town meeting.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Oh, good, okay, the sound's working again. I've been having a lot of trouble with that today. So, the February 15 meeting, when last we talked, which was quite a while ago, the intention was to do all of the meetings on the same day. There ended up being some logistical challenges and other issues that were brought up. So, the Lake District Town Meeting, regardless of any of the other dates, we're now looking at doing that in August, in particular, August 4 at 7:00. And most likely, that will be at the elementary school, depending on whether or not Tim has heard back from them or not, and they have a few more days to get back to us about that. So, that's where that sits right now. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it.
No, does anybody have any questions? Okay, so this meeting's going to be a little confusing, so, because there's so many people here. If we could just kind of raise our hand if you want to say something, and then that way, we're not all speaking over one another. I think that would be the best way to proceed, because it's going to get really confusing. There's going to be a lot of stuff going on. George?
I just want to make sure you can see me if I raise my hand.
I can see you. Carol, did you have a question?
No, I'm off that.
Perfect. Charlie?
I'm good.
Okay. Christine, hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Nope, no questions.
Okay. Jackie, do you have a question?
I was just wondering, I know usually, I'm looking at the bottom, I don't see the hand on my screen, where you can't see me waving.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a spot on here that I can hear?
You can just shout out, Jackie, we love you.
Yeah, Jackie, I'll call, I'll make sure that I keep including you on that, okay?
Okay, no problem.
All right. Katie, do you have any questions?
Questions here, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So, you don't need anything from us, Michael, do you?
No, what will happen is next Monday, I think next Monday is June 1, Jackie and I will have to go up to the school to just open and continue the meeting, but that will be the only thing that happens that night. There's no need for anybody else to come, it's just a simple procedural thing. And that will continue that meeting again until August 4 at 7:00, and most likely at the elementary school. As soon as we've confirmed the availability of the elementary school, I'll ask Tim to put something up on the Facebook or the website or what have you, so that people will know for sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, with nothing?
Oh, you're very welcome.
Well, Mikey, we're not doing the outside meeting?
No, one of the logistical problems with the Lake District meeting was that outside, there can't be any slideshows or PowerPoint presentations or anything like that, because there's no screen and the sunlight would interfere with it. So, the August 4 date is a tentative indoor date. If for health reasons, that's still not advisable, we'll look at having to continue that meeting again at that time.
George, this was just the Lake District, the continuation from the Lake District, that's all?
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on. Discussion with Town Administrator and Town Accountant related to Deficit Spending Authority with Continued Operation after June 30, 2020, in the event of a delay of the FY 2021 budget adoption.
Okay. I just, I asked that this be put on, because there has been some discussion among the other managers, as well as at the state level, the Senator did mention about the 112 budget. I'm not advocating so much for this budget, this type of a 112 budget. The only thing that I am doing is I want to make aware, make the Board and the Finance Committee aware that this option is available, should we come up to June 20 and find ourselves in a situation that would prohibit us from holding that meeting, or on the 29, oh, 27th or 29th, I can't remember the date. But, you know, it's just another option in the toolbox, so to speak. If we reach a point where we're getting towards the end of June, and we need to have a budget in place for the upcoming fiscal year, this is something we could do relatively quickly. Kim and I have discussed it, and if, you know, needed, we could put that budget together. So, I don't know if Kim wants to add anything to that, or?
I just wanted to let everybody know that, again, it is just another option to consider. It's not really a 112 budget, it does allow, it's not really a budget, it's really an authorization to deficit spend. So, you would be setting an amount that you could spend to continue operations for the month of July, and then for the month of August, or as far ahead into the future as you needed, until you actually held your annual town meeting. So, it would allow you to not really do just 112, but you can't do less than 112. So, we could pay for our retirement obligation, which is due the very beginning of July. And, you know, there would be some other types of expenses that come up that aren't really 112, like our insurances for the building and liability and that type of thing. So, it's a really good tool, especially if there is still a lot of concern about where we're going with the revenue outlook, based on what Senator Roderick said. He's hoping that there could be a local aid resolution by the middle of June. So, that would certainly be good to know. But again, it's just really another tool, as David said, to allow you to move forward with your operation. And, you know, if it's logistically too challenging to get to a point where you have an annual town meeting, you can have something in place that your operations continue until such time as you do have a meeting and you vote a budget.
Gary, do you have any questions?
I'm good, I understand the concept, and I'm good with that, yes.
Gary?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I understand the concept with it. Yeah, I just should point out that I've been dropped from the meeting twice already, my screen freezes up, and I have to rejoin, so I may be missing bits and pieces and have to repeat from time to time.
Okay. Carol, do you have any questions?
Nope, that's pretty clear.
George?
Oh, I'm good.
Christine?
I'm good.
Katie?
Sorry, I was on mute, off set, thank you.
Thank you. So, with this availability, should we still go through the process of determining our budget? That's number one. Number two, I have spoken to Lakeville, and they're not making any determinations on their budget until Thursday, or, and then they have a budget meeting on the following Monday. Both Rachel Cameron and myself had a question, because we both have to agree on the regional school budget. Otherwise, it throws a monkey wrench into everything. And then if one town went with the 112 budget and the other town didn't, that would also throw a monkey wrench into another thing. So, those are just some of my concerns that I have.
What it's going to be the resolution, particularly?
So, the school budget, Rachel Cameron said that they would have, that they're still working on their budget, they have a meeting Thursday, and then another meeting on Monday, that we would know what the school budget would be on Tuesday. There are probably some savings within the school budget that he and I both agreed to, like transportation and heat, electricity, some of those things, the van transportation, some of those things might be able to be transferred over to the following year, because it would be going into E and D, and then that would offset the school budget as well. So, I don't have a definitive answer on what that final number will be. I think that both Lakeville and Free Town do understand that there will be cuts to the school budget. So, my question goes back to, do we continue preparing as though we are going to have a town meeting, and then wait until a final determination? Do we review just the warrant articles tonight, and then wait until Monday or Tuesday? Because we have our meeting on Monday, too, maybe we'll have some more information from Lakeville at that point. I don't know the answer, I'm throwing it out there. Charlie?
Okay. All right. I guess my feeling is for right now is yes, let's wait on the budget, because, and I defer a little bit to David and Kim, if I'm going down the wrong trail here, their opinions, feel free to give me your input. But I'm just wondering, if we work on a budget in, right now, is that a futile task, because there are still objects out there that need to be addressed? I guess that's my question.
My, I think if we can wait, so that we don't have to do this twice, I think that would be my preference.
Okay, David?
We, Kim and I are still continuing to work on the budget, so that is a fluid document, and that we could obviously make certain changes that are agreed to by both Lakeville and Free Town to the budget. It's just, in terms of the 112 budget, that's just, once again, an option that, you know, right now, as we sit here, you know, it's my intent to move forward with the budget that we're working on, and we should continue to discuss it. The big thing will be coming, if we are capable or able to hold a town meeting as we plan, there may be some adjustments that will come in a fall town meeting. You know, when we have a better handle specifically on local aid in, on our revenues. The state has a better handle on their revenue. So, I don't know if Kim wants to add anything to that, or?
Just what I've looked at right now is, I believe it's kind of the worst-case scenario, based on the presentation from Senator Roderick. He was talking about 20% cut to state aid, not specifically just to UGA, which is what they had done back in 2009, 2010, but pretty much across the board. So, again, that is his worst case. Best case is level funding of the cherry sheet from fiscal '20. And sort of, the idea is they're going to land somewhere in the middle of that. A lot does depend on the ability to use some of that coronavirus relief fund from the federal government, as to whether that can help to offset any revenue deficits. Overall, though, you know, the town is in a good position, because we don't rely on sales tax, we don't rely on income tax, we don't rely on meals, we don't rely on hotel tax. So, you know, we do rely significantly on property tax. So, you know, overall, I think it's not doomsday. It's certainly something that would be manageable, and as David said, you know, we're still continuing to work out some scenarios. But certainly, you know, there would be a budget that would be presented for June 20, if that's going to come together. Again, you know, I know there are a lot of logistical challenges, trying to get everything in place to do something outside. So, you know, the budget will be ready, you know, if everything ends up being a go.
Okay. George?
Kim, worst-case scenario from the state, what would the effect be on our budget?
Well, just to give you an idea, prior to, prior to the cut, we were looking at, based on the Governor's budget, we were looking at 1.9 million in state aid. With the 20% cut that's being discussed, we're down to 1.5 million.
So, we would lose $400,000? Okay, and how much of an impact would that have on us, considering the cash availability we have?
Oh, it's not so much about cash availability. It would just be, you know, whether there was enough within our remaining revenue stream to to handle what would be appropriate. And again, we do have strong local receipts, even though we are looking at reduced projections. This year, we've done incredibly well on our local receipts. And, you know, we do have some flexibility within our levy. We're not at our levy limit, so we do have some flexibility. So, again, it's not that it's not able to be overcome, but it does require looking at budgets. And certainly, I don't think it means whatever people request is what's going to happen.
I think, like I said previously, if we go into it knowing there's that potential down the road, that there could potentially be a $400,000 shortfall. We have resources that we can take a look at to try to make the number fit better. And it would be with the expectation that the September meeting would come with certain, you know, impacts to our overall budget, in terms of looking at everything again and saying, you know, where are we, how do we get down to a number that we can live with? Thank you.
I would say, I know this isn't the most important thing, but the time is going with deadlines and everything right now. So, like, Friday is supposed to be the final voter cutoff of the annual town meeting, if we're going to have it on the 20th. So, I mean, I can still have it, and then if you decide, we'll have to set another final voter registration. But that's open all day till 8:00 at night, so I was hoping that we were going to get either a decision whether we would go forward with the 20th or sometime in the fall. But just keep in mind, the days are going down, and it takes time to prepare. I have the annual town election on the 16th, so it'd be good to know if we're going to have that meeting on the 20th or not.
I think that there's an expectation that we are going to have that meeting. But, you know, honestly, it's three, you know, weeks, plus weeks away. Things change in three or four weeks, given the current environment we're currently all living in. You know, hopefully, we're moving in the right direction. The plan to have it outside is a good one, as long as we do the things that we talked about in terms of social distancing, and having the different entry points into the field, and having, you know, like I said, the provisions that we've outlined previously in terms of holding a meeting outside. So, the intent is to continue on the path that we're on, and to have the meeting on the 20th.
There will be things that need to be taken care of, because those FEMA flood maps have to be done by July 1. So, we have to have a town meeting, if not for some specific things that have to be done. So, Jackie, I think that we have to proceed accordingly.
Yeah, well, as far as the flood map, they could be put on this special town meeting, if we weren't going to have the annual town meeting on that date, and that would have to be done. But that deadline is 10 days before the election, while the annual town meeting is 20 days before, and Friday is the 20th day.
Okay. Gary, do you have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Have you, Gary, have you in your committee reviewed all the budgets in the warrant articles?
No, no. We have a meeting planned for Friday to make our recommendation on the warrant articles, and then next week, we'll join you for your Tuesday meeting on the budget.
Okay. Anybody else from the Finance Committee? Sorry, Charlie, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, Mike McHugh had given a rundown of about five or six articles that needed to be, well, he felt needed to be handled, for whatever reason. One of them was the floodplain map change. I'm just wondering if that as a fallback plan, we look at those articles that he has presented as possibly what we do initially for the annual town meeting, and then maybe, you know, have a recess and come back at another date and handle more town business. I'm just wondering if that might not be a contingency plan, so that Jackie has a little bit of an idea about the fact that there will be a meeting on the 20th, and go from there.
Me, the special town meeting obviously would be more of a specialized concern kind of thing. So, I don't think that you're going to get a large crowd that you would get normally for an annual town meeting. If we had to move forward with just a special, we could probably do it fairly easily, given that we're not going to get 150 people, you know. I think the expectation for the special town would be considerably smaller, and that we could probably pull that off reasonably quick, and continue the annual until a date certain.
Wait, I'm so confused now, because Charlie is saying the 20th, I'm saying the 20th, and now, am I, and you're saying do the special earlier than the 20th?
No, no, I mean, on the 20th. I'm saying, whatever happens, we could have a special, have the special on the 20th, with four or five, six articles, that are very specialized in terms of the nature, nothing that, you know, should be there, that doesn't have to be there, and that the crowd would probably be a lot smaller, so that, you know, would take away some of the concern about the social distancing, and trying to, you know, adapt to a larger crowd. So, you know, you won't get the 150 people you would probably get for an annual.
So, as to Charlie's idea, we could have the special, open up the annual, and then postpone it to another time. Hold on, go ahead, Kim.
I just think you need to be very concerned about doing anything related to the annual, because if you do have something that is for the annual, you do need to adopt a budget. Mike McHugh might be able to add a little bit more to that, there's been some talk about that on the Moderator, you know, network. Because if you were to open your annual, you would have to adopt a budget, based on my understanding.
Yeah, Kim is referencing an email that had gone through the Moderator's list, and it did quote somebody from the Department of Revenue, that said that if you hold an annual town meeting during the month of June, you must adopt a budget, that the Department of Revenue did not consider it appropriate to continue the budget simply for financial uncertainty. They only considered it appropriate if you were unable to safely hold a meeting. You know, if you had 50 people even show up for the special town meeting, you'd have a quorum for the annual town meeting, and the fact that you had even posted the warrant for that day would make it appear that you were able to have the annual town meeting. And then, the 112 contingency, all of that is out the window, and it becomes necessary to vote on the budget that day. The budget could still be amended at a future meeting, but you would not be able to postpone action on the budget for months at a time, you would have to deal with it on June 20.
Okay. Anybody have any, go ahead, Charlie.
This is probably a question for Mike, more than anything. Mike, you had sent that, oh, message about the different articles there. Was that, and I can't, I don't have it in front of me, I can't remember for sure. Was that a suggestion that we put those articles on a special town meeting? Or were those the articles at the time that you wrote, you wanted to put on a annual town meeting?
On that list, one was the flood zone article, because that does have to be dealt with before a particular date. So, if we were not going to have the annual town meeting, the last draft of the warrant that I saw, that article had been put on the annual town meeting. I was suggesting that if we weren't going to have the annual town meeting, that that be shifted over to the special town meeting. The other things on that list, I think all but one of them were either non-financial, or they were cost-neutral. The only financial one that I had suggested was Mo DiMarangelo had an article for removing a large tree. And assuming that tree was a danger, and was going to have to be dealt with one way or another, it just seemed to make sense to take care of it sooner rather than later.
All right. So, once again, your suggestion would possibly be to put those articles on a special town meeting?
Correct. If we were not having an annual town meeting, to put them on a special and just get them out of the way.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike.
So, I guess I'm?
Oh, you're welcome.
I guess I'm still confused, because I'm listening to Kim, and she's saying, you know, we are not going to be, we're going to be okay with this budget, right? And we always have the ability to go back in the fall and replenish, should we need to, or should more revenue come our way, whether it be the federal money, or, you know, loosening up the strings on some of that federal money? So, I'm not sure what doing the 112 budget, or whatever you want to call it, would really do for us, because we're not, we're in a better position than other towns, because we've saved so much money over the years, and because, like Kim said, our revenue stream, our receipts came in, and everything's okay. So, I'm not sure why we wouldn't go forward. I'm throwing it out there. What would be the benefit?
All right. I'll just, my thing, I don't know that there would be a benefit. So, I guess I'll defer any comment, if at all, you, and I'm not saying you're implying that I'm doing one thing, I'm just. So, I guess I'll ask Kim the question, Kim, would, what would be the benefit of a 112 budget, other than that's an option?
Well, one benefit is just, you know, as we get closer to at least the middle of June, if we're able to get a local aid resolution, we would know definitively what our local aid is going to be. Again, that still might be enough time to just make any final changes to the budget. But again, that was a possibility to have it by the middle of June. But again, that was, um, a possibility to have it by the middle of June. Um, depending on where things go with the state, um, you know, it might be later than that. Um, but again, we are looking at the worst case scenario. So, um, you know, it, it's not that we wouldn't survive, uh, the worst case. Um, I, I think in terms of just another advantage is, I mean, there's a lot that's, that has to go into making this town meeting come to be, um, just in terms of all the logistics. So if, if, if all of that is under control and, and folks feel like it's really going to be a go, um, you know, I, I think it's fine to move ahead. Um, you know, uh, uh, again, it's just an option.
Yeah. The, the only reason I, I'm saying is, you know, from a public health standpoint, right now we're trending in the right direction. Everything is going, the numbers are going down. We're looking as though we're in, in good shape. But, you know, uh, just as an option, just in, if something blew up, so to speak, in terms of we get an, uh, uh, we became a hotspot or we, um, you know, had a, a spike in, in the number of, uh, of positive, uh, Corona cases, then that would be where I would say, hey, you know, is it going to be safe for the public to come to a meeting, uh, you know, given that scenario? I'm not anticipating that scenario, uh, because like I said, things are going in the right direction. But it's another, it's a, once again, another tool in the toolbox, so to speak. If we come up to that point and we're in some kind of a crisis mode.
We could be saying the same thing about this in the fall, though.
Absolutely.
Spike may be coming up. So I'm like, we have a window of opportunity now. We have money. Um, the Senator Rodericks again said, do the twenty percent reduction. It will be safe if you do it that way. I mean, and that's what we've been using. That's what we've been going by. So if, unless there's a, like a real benefit to holding off, and we also have to think about, we have to be on the same path as Lakeville. Unfortunately, we top, we're tied by the regional school district. And if one town doesn't, the other town doesn't, we're, we'll have to go to a joint town meeting. So that's, uh, you know, everything that we need. Gary?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I had lost the connection again a little while ago. Um, and I'm, it's kind of intermittent, so I'm missing a few things. But, uh, I think we should go ahead with the annual town meeting because we have those articles in the special town meeting or, or some of them in the annual that we need to do anyway. Um, so, yeah, I don't think there's any point in waiting.
Christine?
I think we should move forward with the annual town meeting.
Katie? Agreed. Move forward. Carol?
I agree. Uh, as long as we're operating on it, we're assuming a twenty percent reduction. So, I mean, I agree with that. I say go along with it. Go on with it.
George?
No, I'm, I'm on board with that. I would say go ahead.
All right.
We also have Craig here.
I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. Um, would it be wise? For, I got a selfish motive here. I don't really relish the idea of sitting in the sun, um, doing a two or three hours. Um, but that being said, um, would it be maybe, uh, a wise choice to expedite things is that we put on the annual town meeting at this time, uh, the budget and, um, the articles that net, that have to be dealt with? And then, uh, hold off on the others to expedite the town meeting a little bit with what, uh, uh, ask for input on that?
I think, I think tonight we'll go through the warrant articles and those that we don't need, we're going to, we're going to cross them out or we'll postpone them till the fall. Um, but here's what I've learned and I'm sure you've learned and George and Gary and everybody else that's on the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. If both the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen are in sync, that meeting goes smoothly. There's no, we, we just need to all be on the same page and I think that will all be okay. But, um, I, I think that you're right. No one wants to be out there longer than we need.
Cut it down. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, yes. Unfortunately, we have a town meeting form of government here. And it may be a good form of government, uh, but not in a, not in a epidemic, but, uh.
Not in Corona world?
Yes.
Yes, Gary?
Could I, could I throw in? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I, I just want to point out that Craig Rosen is on the phone. So, uh, you should probably poll him as well when you're asking if we have questions.
Thank you. I will certainly do that. Michael?
Uh-oh, uh, you could let Craig go ahead first because I, I think he's tied in with the sort of vote that you took a second ago, the, the polling.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go along with the rest of the committee. I mean, I'll make it unanimous.
Okay, it's just, it's just a poll, nothing, I mean, we need to know whether we're going to work on this and move forward or whether we're going to shelve it and go accordingly. So I'll, I'll ask
The rest of the committee wants to go ahead. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yep, um, just two things. One, uh, though I'm sure it may come up later during your meeting. Just remember that you guys have not yet, you voted the date and the location for the annual town meeting and the special town meeting, but you've not yet voted the time. Uh, I know we were waiting for the Lake District resolution before that. Uh, but it was mentioned to me that the planning board is going to, uh, try and do their hearing that they're required to do on the zoning map, uh, the, the flood map article, uh, and schedule that at a time to, to work off the time of the annual town meeting. So if you guys could, uh, vote on a time for that tonight, that would be, I think, very helpful to the planning board. Uh, the second thing I was going to mention, and this goes back to what Charlie was saying a second ago. Uh, there, in some other towns, there's used, uh, a voting method called a consent calendar. And what they do is they take articles that are routine, they appear every year. A lot of times they're ones that don't get much debate and, and sometimes they're ones that are not even optional. Um, and they will use procedural methods to not have to read and go through each of those articles individually. I had sent Tim kind of a draft a week or so ago of what that might look like here. And I would just offer that to you that once you have settled on the warrant, I can revise that list and that may help save some time. That would be things like, um, the New Bedford Women's Center article, ones that, ones that appear every year. Nobody ever asks questions about them. Uh, they seem to go through unanimously or nearly unanimously. Um, it, it just, it's almost like, uh, it's basically moving the articles to the front, waiving the reading of art, all of them and accepting them all at the same time. And it, it just saves a considerable amount of time. Uh, if that's something you guys are interested in, I can revise it. It would just need to be printed as part of the warrant so people would know about it ahead of time.
I think that's a wise decision. Those, those articles, they don't take any time at all and, but yet, um, they're still on there year after year. So, um, definitely a wise, a wise way to move this along. Um, I will also, um, I, I'll ask everybody for their input, but first I'd like to go to Mike and Jackie to ask what town do you think you would like the town meeting to be?
Uh, ladies first.
Well, it's on a Saturday, so I, I'd barely, whatever time you set up, I don't know. We were going to do an early afternoon, um, you know, because of the Lake District and everything else like that, but since we're not going to have that and if it's going to be a shorter meeting, I don't know if you'd prefer to go later afternoon, but then you've got to deal with mosquitoes and stuff. So maybe early morning is better before the sun gets too hot.
So maybe like eleven? Michael, what do you think?
Um, I would definitely not go earlier than eleven, but eleven could work. Um, it seems familiar to me that when we had talked about this before, we talked about maybe doing the Lake District at eleven and the annual at one. So if we weren't doing the Lake District and we just bumped the annual town meeting up to eleven, that would, I think that would be logical. Um, I think the concern about mosquitoes later in the day is, uh, is definitely wise as well. So maybe a start time somewhere, somewhere in the ballpark of no earlier than eleven, no later than one o'clock would, would get us on the right track.
Well, Michael, I was thinking
Yeah, Michael, and then, yeah. Then Michael could be done in a half an hour, an hour at the most.
Gary, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, Michael, you said annual, but don't we do the special first?
Uh, that's a good point. So I, I guess what I would mean is whatever town meetings we're going to do on June twentieth, let's not start any of them before eleven o'clock or later than one o'clock.
Carol?
Um, I, yeah, I'm in agreement with that. My only concern is do we need to or can we even set a rain date?
Yes, we have already set a rain date for the week after.
Okay. Um, just a quick question. Why, why are we looking at eleven as opposed to ten? Do you think we'd get less people at ten?
That I can recall, uh, even back when we used to do town meetings routinely on Saturday, they were never in the morning. Um, they, I think the annual town meeting years ago was at one and the special town meeting was either at twelve or twelve thirty. Uh, it just seems to be what people are used to. So I could see the argument for eleven. If you start getting earlier than that, A, I don't think people are going to be used to it and, and B, by then, we don't know where people are going to be. There, there could be activities or something that they're tied up with earlier in the morning by that point that, uh, they'll want to get out of the way before they come to something that's going to last who knows how long.
Listen.
Go ahead, George.
Hi.
Uh, you know, the, the only thing I would be very concerned about is we're going to be at time of year that is going to be very hot. Middle of the day, we're almost in July, could be very, very hot. And that might be an issue. Uh, later afternoon might be better. Uh, mosquitoes are certainly a problem. Maybe we could get Bristol County to spray the area the day before. So it just points to, uh, ponder.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
I, I, just in terms of what happens during the day, uh, the hottest part of the day tends to be later in the afternoon after the sun has had a chance to heat things up. So, uh, eleven or twelve might be okay. Uh, it's liable to get hotter around two or three, I think.
I wasn't thinking about the special town meeting, but I don't know, Michael, if ten o'clock might not be, um, a, a good, it would maybe be a good idea to start the special at ten and then schedule the annual for eleven. I don't think ten is too early for people. It gives them a chance to sleep in a little late and still be able to, um, get up for ten.
How about ten thirty? Because, I mean, we don't have that many articles on this special and if we're going to move things around and take things off, then that way, if we're only going to meet for half an hour for the special, no one's going to want to wait around for another half an hour for the annual. So if we do this special at ten thirty, um, we should be done. If not, we run a little over. We'll run right into the annual and we should be good, right?
I could see that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good too. And also as far as the special and the annual, even though they have different cutoffs for the final voter registration, it's, it's in one book and we check them off twice as they come in. So it's not like everybody would have to leave and come back in again. Um, we could just continue it. So that would, that sounds like it'd be fine.
Okay, great. Charlie?
Um, Michael and, uh, Jackie, could we set the time for the annual town meeting to, uh, words, something like directly after the conclusion of the special town meeting? So we have no
Um, I think Michael will, will let you, that, you have to put on the warrant itself the exact time that the, the meeting's supposed to start. And I mean, sometimes we don't start if there's voters you have to wait for and everything right at that time. But you have to post it on the warrant, the exact place and time that the town meeting starts. You can't say after, um, the special town meeting, unfortunately.
Okay, so
As far as I know, yes.
Yes, as, what, Michael? Yes, as to Jackie's
Uh, yeah, yes, yes, to what Jackie, I'm sorry.
I, I think the key is the, the noticing. You have to give the public notice and specifically reference a time that the meeting, because the expectation is the meeting's going to be held at the time you, you post it for. And if it does, we have had instances where, you know, things have gotten backed up and we've had to start ten, fifteen, twenty minutes later and that's acceptable. But the notice to the public was that the meeting was going to be held on a date certain and a specific time and a specific place. I think all of those are, are regulations or laws that you really need to follow.
Okay, so can I, um, have a motion to have the, um, special town meeting at ten thirty with the annual at eleven?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Call the members. Thank you, Craig. Tim?
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, can we move on to this, um, the warrant articles now? Is everybody prepared for that?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have a copy, but that's all right.
It's, uh, follow on, on your agenda. If you scroll up, it'll be on there.
Um, the, uh, I'm sorry, but I don't have the, um, capacity on the tablet, I don't believe, to like get extra screens. Do you mind, you, do you mind if Tim just, uh, summarized? I, I, I've read all the articles about three or four times. So if you, that's the article involving water department transfer, whatever it might be.
Yep. If we actually, just give me a moment, I can actually set it up as a screen sharing, uh, thing.
Yes.
So I'll be right on the same screen. So I just got to pull up the documents. So one moment. Uh, do we want the clean version or the, the red line version with town council?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will do the, the clean version in that case. Uh, just to, to revise, accepted. Are we starting with the special or the annual?
Special.
Special. All right, we just have to ignore my highlighting and whatnot because it's my working document here. All right. Is everyone able to see that?
Yeah, I can. Yes.
All right, then we should be good to go.
All right, Article one. Um, I'm just going to do a synopsis. The twenty thousand, three seventy-one, thirty-four Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, um, for paying prior, uh, fiscal year. Three prior fiscal year bills. Everybody all right with that?
Yep.
I'm fine.
All right.
Lisa, if, I'm, if I need it, if I have an issue, I'll, I'll speak up. Other than that, I'm good, okay?
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you so much for that.
It goes to me too, Lisa.
Okay, thanks. Gary?
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll actually vote on these, um, separately at our meeting on Friday. But, uh, yeah, we'll just ask questions if we have them today.
Okay, that's perfect. And then if you can indicate to us that, um, you want further information or you're not sure, just let me know. Otherwise, I'm just going to assume that these are kind of matter of fact things and you're okay with everything.
Okay.
Okay, um, number two, um, to see if the town will vote a hundred thousand dollars for supplementing the Old Colony Educational Assessment. Um, this is their extra cost to us, um, for special education.
Lisa, I don't believe this includes the, uh, remember that they wanted to do a, uh, reserve fund transfer? I don't think this includes the full dollar amount, so we might just have to double check that with
That is, that, that's, that's not the full dollar amount. There was an offset that we had planned on, so.
Are you still taking that out of reserve or are you taking that from here?
Uh, we're going to do it, uh, we're going to do it as a reserve fund transfer.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Okay.
So is that number correct or is there, are we doing it two separate?
No, that's, the number is correct.
Yeah.
And that, that will, that's not the total number, though, for what we're going to need or what?
No, it is not. We have, there's, I want to say that's, it's, uh, the total is, uh, somewhere and I don't have the num, I don't have the budget in front of me. I want to say it's I want to say it's between 122, uh, to 125, so we're going to need another $22,000 to $25,000 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund.
Okay.
Okay, number three, um, 167, 96166 for supplementing, um, payment to the sewer for the city of Fall River, um, that's coming out of Water and Sewer, so we should be all set with that. Hearing nothing, I'm moving on. Um, Article number four, to see if the town will rescind the authorization of unissued portion of debt, $72,000, um, which was originally the $6,500,000. It's not, it's reducing it, it's not taking any money, um, out of that or increasing it, so we should be all set with that. Hearing nothing, I'm moving on.
Uh, the next two articles are the stabilization articles. Uh, Kim had suggested something, uh, regarding those. I included that email in the board's packet. I don't know if Kim wants to talk a little bit more about that recommendation.
Kim? Um, actually, for the special, I would say you could probably get rid of Article 5 and Article 6, because there, there was only 100,000 that was left in free cash, and we're using that with Old Colony. Um, my other comment was relating to the same articles that appear on the annual and perhaps, um, rewording those, but my suggestion would be to just get rid of these two. All right, everybody all set with getting, getting rid of Article 5 and 6?
I'll make a motion if need be. I, I guess, Tim, that would be, need to be a motion, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we strike Article 5 and 6.
George, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So, we have a special town meeting warrant at the moment.
Do you want us to vote on that, too, now?
Aye, if you'd like, yeah.
Yep, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, special town meeting warrant article.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, whatever.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Aye.
And Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, you're going to bring up the other screen, Tim?
Yep, just one moment here. Share screen. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, everybody's, um, all set with Article 1? Because if not, then we're not going anywhere after this.
Yep. Yeah.
Um, okay, Article 2. We will have to put those in after we vote on the budget, okay? Article 3 is a Water Sewer Enterprise Fund budget for, um, fiscal year 2021. Okay, Article 4, um, $3,800 for the purpose of removing a tree.
I, I guess, my only, uh, thing is, is, you know, well, it's $38, $3,800, uh, and it, to gamble it, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, moving on. Um, Article number 5, uh, the 10% increase in compensation for an assessor or assistant assessor who's completed the necessary courses of study, um, it comes to an amount of $419.20. Hearing nothing, moving on. Um, Article 6, $500 for the maintenance of graves. Okay, moving on. Article 7, the $2,000 for the women's center. Okay, moving on. Um, Article 8, $2,500 for repair or restoration of monuments in various cemeteries. Okay, moving on. Um, number, Article number 9, $3,500 um, from the sale of cemetery lots to be used by the Cemetery Commission for Maintenance and Improvement. Okay, moving on.
"Con" is a 2019 movie directed by Scott Beck, starring Katie Stevens, Lauren McLean.
Good to know.
Okay, Article number 10, $6,800 for the purpose of updating the two-year actuarial op-ed study. Okay, uh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, moving on. Article 11, to see if the town will vote for the $23,000 from special revenue receipts from the cable company to, um, pay for cable video funding services. Okay, moving on. Um, $30,000, okay, so now, Article number 12, can you scroll up a little bit, Tim? Article number 12, Article number 13 were put on, um, by petition, but I have heard from the petitioners that they are taking this off. Okay?
Lisa?
Yes?
No, it's Mike again. Uh, they, they've contacted me for the same thing. Legally, the petitions cannot be removed from the warrant.
Right.
But once they give me a letter, I'll be announcing to, to the voters that the petitioners do not want those articles to be adopted and are requesting that they be defeated.
Yeah, I knew that they couldn't be taken off, but I just wanted to let everybody know that they, they're going to withdraw it, or however you're going to work it, they're just not going to move forward with that.
I'm good.
Okay, moving on. Um, the $85,335 to pay for the network infrastructure of Free Town Lakefield Regional School District. Um, I think that we have the, this is just me speaking, we have the ability to withdraw this, um, but I think we have to find out what Lakefield's doing, too. Um, I don't, I don't know what anybody else thinks. It doesn't matter to me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
As, as you said, we can always withdraw it at the, on the day.
Okay, moving on. Um, Article number 15, this is, okay, this was also put on by petition, it's $500,000 for the purpose of, um, renovating and expanding the senior center. So, um, they're the only ones that can withdraw it, so, uh, it has to stay on. Okay, Article number 16, um, $619,500. Um, the unused appropriation for the Water, uh, Capital Fund project. This was money that was given to them several years ago, um, for the purpose of, um, building a facility that they thought they might need. Um, D E P has not required them, they may in the future, but right now, they are doing the necessary protocol, um, not to have, um, not to be, not to have to do this. So, we could take this $619,000, pay down the ban, or we could take this $619,000, not knowing what's going to happen in Article 15, and put it into the capital stabilization. What's everybody's pleasure?
Um, if I may, Lisa.
Yeah.
I think it should be withdrawn from, uh, and brought back to, uh, it was brought out of capitalization, at least bring it back to capitalization, uh, table. Uh, you know, the, the state might like us to, uh, put that system in, but they aren't going to be paying the bill.
Right.
But I, I, I think to, uh, go along with, I have no problem going along with this audit.
Do you, do you want to put it in towards the ban of the police station? Or do you want to put it back in capital stabilization, not knowing what's going to happen with Article number 15?
Well, yeah, I, I think not knowing what's going to happen, um, I think it would be best to, um, not put it towards the ban right, right now. I believe we do have, um, some time before the ban expires to, uh, make a, a, a further decision if we need to. Am I correct in that, uh, assumption, uh, David or Kim?
Kim? Uh, yeah, you don't need to do anything in terms of the ban, um, because that actually won't come due till the very beginning of January. So, if we have a fall town meeting, um, at which point, we would know if we have any free cash, um, you may want to use that towards a paydown, or again, you could tap into your stabilization. All right, I'll, thank you, Kim. I'll entertain a motion for Article number 16 to put the $619,500 into capitaliz, capitalization.
Make the motion.
Motion may, I'd second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Aye. Kim, I was making up a new word. Okay, moving on.
Uh, Gary had a question.
Oh, sorry, Gary, I, I can't see you anymore.
Oh, and Tim, can you scroll back to?
Yeah.
15?
Uh, to 15?
Yeah, I think it's 15, uh, no, 16, 16, sorry. Um, I, can I suggest and edit it in the explanation? Um, in, at the last sentence where it says, "The need for a new filtration facility is no longer required." Uh, that's kind of redundant. You could just say, "A new filtration facility is no longer required." The need for is redundant.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the professor grammar in it.
That's the professor.
And that, uh, let's see. I don't know whether this, there's a similar thing in 17 or not, but, uh, uh, no.
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay, so this is, um, $61,280.95 from the Bridge Rehab Capital Project. Um, those funds were not used. Where would you like to put those in regular stabilization or capital stabilization?
Um, my own opinion would be regular stabilization.
I agree. George?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, can I have a motion to put, um, the $61,280.95 into regular stabilization?
Motion.
Motion. I'll second that motion, whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on. Whoa.
Sorry.
Okay, number 18 is just so, um, we, uh, it's a tell financing agreement with All American Investment Group, um, for the financing or, uh, of the police cruisers. We do this all, every year, so that's one of those articles that, you know, pretty much is a given. Everybody okay?
Yes.
Okay. Article number 19 is the placeholder for appellate tax board. Do we know anything about that?
Just need Mike to change his hat, uh, to change his hat, I guess.
Oh, okay, Mike's going to take it, all right.
Uh, David, Mike, whoever.
Somebody.
The, the last I had heard, they had moved the, the hearings up to July. So, the, uh, the appellate tax board hearing was originally scheduled for April, and, uh, because of the situation with the courts, they had pushed it up to July. I have heard nothing from, uh, Attorney Blake since, so maybe Mike would have something to say about that, I don't know.
Uh, David, it, it sounds like you know exactly what I know. I have not heard anything in a couple of months, and uh, one way or another, I don't think that this is anything that's going to be ready or needed by, by June 20th. I don't think. Uh, I haven't heard anything.
So, should we withdraw it?
Uh, Gary has a, a question.
Gary?
Wondering, do we know anything about what this article is about?
We, we do, but at the current time, it's executive session between the selectmen and the assessors, so we, I don't believe we can even discuss it in this forum right now.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, it's litigation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can, we can try contacting Judge Blake maybe one more time, um, maybe say if we haven't heard from him by Friday, we'll, we'll pull this, or if not, leave it on, but I, I doubt we're going to hear very much.
Well, if it, if the, if it's not going to, the hearing's not going to be until July, I would assume that we would place this on the October town meeting.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
Or if necessary, we could always do an emergency specials as well, if it's, becomes present later on.
Right, um, this, there's a, there's a method where this would become relevant before the hearing, but I, again, I don't think that I can explain the reason right now.
All right, let's leave it on till Fri, till Friday. If we don't hear anything by Friday, we'll pull it off. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
George?
Yes.
Okay, Gary, I can't see you, but do you have any other questions?
Uh, no.
Or anybody else from the FinCom? I, I can't see everybody, I can only see Tim and Charlie.
No, Carol's all set.
Okay, thank you.
It is all set, thank you.
Oh, all set, Christine? Thank you, guys and girls.
Greg's all set.
Thanks, Craig. All right, Article, Article number 20. Uh, you would know more about this, Charlie, than I would.
Yes, all, um, all it is, is a, uh, receiving from, I, I believe the piece of property, and Mike also knows a little bit, the piece of property was on the treasurer's list of property to be disposed of. Uh, the Conservation Commission had said that they were interested in, because it's not a buildable lot, uh, to, to protect, uh, the wetlands that are on the property, and that's what this article is doing, is allowing us to accept as conservation land this piece of property, which the town owns from tax title.
Okay.
Correct, Michael?
Yep, that's a, that's an excellent summary.
All right, so it is important to leave it on?
Um, well, it, it could be taken, it could be taken care of at another time, that's certainly, uh, a perspective. Um, I don't know if you want to lump, well, I don't know if you want to lump it in, as Mike said, with these other articles, or not.
Uh, I think people are confused with this one.
Okay.
Ooh, there, so Article 20, um, I would say it's not, it's not pressing. It, it didn't, if we weren't otherwise having a town meeting, there'd be no reason to call one just to do this.
Right.
But this, honestly, this probably would have ended up on the list of ones that I would have, have looked to have disposed of quickly, because I don't think these types of articles ever elicit very much discussion. It's, if land the town already owns that it's not paying for, that doesn't have very much resale value, um, there, there's going to be one more of these coming up in the fall. I mean, you could always lump this one together with that one, but I, I don't think that it hurts either way.
I'm just thinking of time, that's all. Like, we were talking about not having a long town meeting, and if people are going to get confused, I would rather hold off on it. If everybody's not going to be confused, and you feel like it's a one-and-done kind of thing, we can leave it on. I'm, I'm good either way.
All right, I'll make the motion that we, uh, strike the article for the, at this moment. If there's, especially if there's going to be another one at a later time, we could lump them together, so to speak, and, uh, have the, one discussion over the whole thing. So, I'll make the motion that we strike Article 20.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, number 21, um, this would be to increase the, um, up to two alternate members of the Free Town Conservation Commission. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay. It's not something that's going to be imperative, if anyone has that question. Uh, so, I'll just, I'll just give you that information.
What is, what does that really mean, alternate members? These are not regular members?
Right, exactly. If, an alternate member could step in if there was an quorum at a meeting, an altern, if there was a conflict of interest, the alternate member would step in.
Okay, all right. All right, why don't we just leave it? All right, why don't we just leave it then?
Okay, moving on, number 22. Those are the revolving accounts, spending, limits for those accounts.
Right.
Okay, article number 23, moving on. This is the floodplain overlay. And I'm not gonna speak to that, so somebody else is.
Well, I know this one is actually required by FEMA. I don't know the details about it of, of any way, but I do know it's required by FEMA.
Right, that's why we can't take it off, and I can't even explain it, because that would be from the planning board and, so we'll wait.
There's been a lot of discussion about it at the manager's level, because a lot of towns are concerned about holding the town meeting when they're doing the 112 budget. But from my understanding, FEMA is not gonna budge on this, and that they are gonna require that to be done, so it has to stay on.
Yep, perfect, thank you, David.
And basically, all it is, is it's approving the floodplain map, new floodplain map to coincide with zoning, so people can get flood insurance. If not, if they don't do it, then they wouldn't be eligible for flood insurance.
Okay, moving on. Article number 24, capital stabilization, and article number 25, regular stabilization. Kim?
Oh, okay. We're definitely, at this point in the game, not gonna have any extra funding that we're gonna be able to set aside to put into either of those stabilizations. That may be a different story come the fall, once we've closed out fiscal '20. One suggestion that I did have for you to consider would be if you wanted to look at using either capital or regular stabilization to fund any specific items within the budget, that you would want to consider moving these articles up to the beginning of the warrant, right after, when you fix the salaries. And then, anything that might be in the budget that you might wanna fund from either of these sources, you would do as an article and pull it out of the budget. You know, not a have to, just something to consider. So for example, if the highway roof is one of the items that we're really trying to leave in the budget. So if you wanted to pay for that from capital stabilization, you would need an article that would reflect that. So just some thoughts about maybe moving these to the beginning and changing the wording to actually use money from them.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, now I guess my question to the board would be, do we, do we need to have the articles fixed in number at this time? Tim, are we, if we vote on accepting this warrant, would, can we change the articles around?
Yes, you, you won't be actually finalizing it with all the, like, an actual, like, a booklet until Monday's meeting. So you will still be able to rearrange them a little bit as needed.
All right.
All right, so once we do the budget on Monday, then we'll know what we have and what we're gonna do, so we could make decisions on those two articles at that time.
The budget's actually gonna be done on Tuesday.
Right, but, okay.
So we can wait and finalize this on Tuesday instead, that's fine.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Lisa?
Yes?
Could, could I just take you guys back to article 20 for one second? I, I might have been off on, on a date.
Article 20?
Article 20 was that, that land for the conservation commission?
Sure.
The other property that I was saying would be done in the fall, that's not going to be eligible for town meeting action until the middle of October. So if the thought was to have the fall town meeting in September, you would probably want to do article 20 now, because you won't be doing the other one until sometime in 2021.
No, I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't wanna have the special, I wouldn't wanna have a fall town meeting in September. We usually try to do it the end of October.
Okay, at one point, there was talk of doing it in September, so I, I just wanted to bring that up.
I think if we didn't do our June town meeting, then we probably would have it earlier, but since we're going along that path, I think we should be all set and have it in October.
Okay, terrific, then, then that article 20 could still wait.
Perfect, okay. Finance committee, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I guess, do you have any sense yet as to whether you wanna take Kim's suggestion to move things up? Move those articles up and use stabilization?
Like Kim said, I think one of the articles that we would consider would be the highway barn roof, and that would come out of capital stabilization. We don't know where we are with any of the other budget numbers, because there may be cuts that we, that will be made, so we could probably make that up somewhere along the line. But we can, we can discuss that on Tuesday, once we know where we are.
What, what's the amount for the highway barn?
55?
50.
50.
50.
Okay. And we're looking at, at possibly having, what was it, $61,000 from that repurposing of the was, was it the, the water?
Repurposed from the bridge.
From the bridge.
Right, yeah. Instead of putting that into capital stabilization, maybe that could go to the highway barn?
Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Well, the vote that you guys took was to put it in regular stabilization.
Oh, right, regular, okay. Yeah, I mean, just, what I'm thinking about is, is that once you put it into the stabilization, it's a two-thirds vote to get it out. Might just be logistically easier to do it directly.
I'm open to that. I'm open to funding the 55 from the 61, and anything left over would go into regular stabilization.
Right, I have, I have no problem with that, especially if it's not gonna require the two-thirds vote, then it's just that much easier. Gonna require a majority vote. Want me to make that motion to, all right, I'll make the motion.
First, you have to rescind, rescind the other motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we rescind the prior vote on, which article is that, Tim?
That is article 17.
Article 17, to rescind our vote on article 17 to place the amount of money described into stabilization.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacico?
Yes.
That carries unanimously.
Good idea, Gary, thank you.
And then you just have to vote what, exactly what you're doing, the 50,000, to fund $50,000 for the highway barn, and then remainder to capital, to capital stabilization.
To regular stabilization.
Regular or capital?
Regular.
Regular, okay.
I'll make the motion to fund article 17 with $55,000, that's the correct, 50, okay. Right, all right, see, 55 got there.
I know, sorry.
$50,000 from, now, now, now I'm lost, all right. I'll make the motion to fund article 17 with $50,000 from the bridge overpay, whatever it might be. And the remaining sum to, to regular capitalization. Everything I said, Tim, do the opposite.
You're not looking to fund article 17, you're looking to take the, the funding in article 17 to repurpose, right?
Yeah.
Repurpose it from the 61 to the 50.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Yeah, second that motion, George. Aye.
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 Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Pacico?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. So do we want to vote to approve the other articles as written?
Might as well. I'll make a motion that we approve the articles as described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacico?
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
All right, so we are all set. So Gary, you guys are meeting what day?
All right, Friday.
Friday, okay. Can you just touch base and let us know how you guys came out for Monday, so we'll have everything that we need for Tuesday's meeting?
Yep.
Perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanna thank you from the finance committee for joining us. It was actually very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night, we have to continue.
Oh, I, I think I need a motion to adjourn. I, I need one of my committee members to make a motion to adjourn.
Right, it's Katie.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Hi, everyone. Bye, Kim, thank you. Welcome.
Do I have a second?
Thanks, Kim.
I thought Katie seconded.
I'll second it. It's Katie.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I don't think we need a voice, individual count on this, do we?
You do, actually.
I do? Okay. Okay, Katie?
In favor.
Who else is still here? Craig?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Carol has already left.
Yep, it's just you.
Okay.
Carol has left the building.
Okay. We, the finance committee meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Shovel snow.
That's all you, Gary.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, Mike.
Good night, Michael, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Okay, guys, with my work being done, I will turn it over to the Board of Health.
Thank you, Lisa. I know I'm gonna break everybody's heart, but it's 7:30. And what I had in mind for the meeting might be a little lengthy. And also, a couple of the issues that I wanted to bring up are not on the agenda. So what I'd like to do is post the agenda for the next meeting that we have, if that's okay.
Yeah, can you send those over to Tim?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And Charlie?
Yes.
So when we want things on the agenda, I'm just gonna ask everybody to forward what you want on the agenda to Tim.
Okay, fine.
So it's in writing, and we have, like, we can use it for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, and then Tim will forward it to David and myself.
Okay.
All right, perfect. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacico?
Yes. Good night, everybody, thank you, David.
Take care, everybody, have a good night.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Good night.